So, thank you for coming out here. Let me introduce to you a few people that I think you know. I just want to say hello and thanks for coming out too. I want to get this right because I always blow the official title. The co-owner and executive chairman and governor George Gosby is here. The executive vice president and general manager Don Maloney. And the co-owner, president and CEO, I never include all three. I remember now. Anthony LeBlanc, everybody. We've been running around getting your questions. I'm going to homogenize some of them in the interest of time because one of us has to get in and do a television show. But I do want to say this, I can count on maybe one finger, the number of professional sports teams in this town that would do something like this here on a game day. Not just a game day, but a sold-out game day. You can't get a ticket. I think there's 50 standing around all these seats left. It's also in the middle of, obviously, the push to the Olympic break. There's a lot of tension around here right now with the team on the bubble for the postseason. So, this tells me everything I need to know about the leadership of the Phoenix Coyotes. So, thank them once again and we'll start. One more, I love applause. I don't get it on my TV show. All right. Don said as we walked out that he must go first. Right, Don?
I guess.
Okay. All right. Don, I guess I just want to get a broad stroke here from you. Can you just tell us, give us a state of the team address right now after 50-plus games? I know it's been a very challenging 48 hours around here after the Buffalo game, but can you paint a bigger picture to us?
Well, you know, we're, obviously, we had a great start, the first 20 games, and the last 20 have been mixed. We've just, between our goaltending, our defense and our forwards and our management and our coaching, where you seem to be hot and cold a little bit. So, if somebody asked me, "Are you disappointed where you are?" No, I think we are where we are. We know if, we have to play a certain way to have success. And when we, I think for everybody that was at the L.A. game, it was a really good example of if, from the goaltending on out, if we play the way we have to play and play right, we can be with anybody in the league. And that's the good thing. The reason I'm excited is, if anybody knows Dave Tippett and his staff, I mean, they find a way to get that consistency. And we haven't grabbed it back yet. We've lost a little bit in December. And that's what we're searching for. So, obviously, we're heading into a break in a week or so. There's a roster freeze starting next Friday till the 23rd of February that stops, obviously, any trades or any deals. But we're looking hard. We're looking to try and improve the club any way we can. It really doesn't change much. Every day we go into the office to try and figure out how do we get better? How do we position ourselves better? I still believe we're a playoff team, but we have to go out and show it. So, all in all, we've got a real challenge tonight. It should be a terrific night tonight. It's great with the support we've been getting. The last, you know, half dozen, dozen games here have been excellent. We just have to get the job done on the ice.
Let's go to Anthony LeBlanc. I'm going to merge a couple of questions. You have been all over the news the last 48 hours. You've led the news cycle and that's because of the name change with the Arizona Coyotes. So, let's just go to the genesis of that. You mentioned that in the opening press conference when you guys took over. So, why go there and what will it look be come next year?
Sure. Well, first off, I just also want to echo Todd's comments and thank everybody for coming out. And my apologies, I officially, I missed the official notice that I was supposed to put a suit on today. So, I hope everyone, it's probably the first time any of you have seen me not in a suit. So, I think it's just Gosby trying to make fun of me. So, ah, there we go. See you guys next time, dressed down. When we were working with the city of Glendale through the whole acquisition process, it was clear that they would like to see us adopt the name that the Cardinals had already done and, obviously, the Diamondbacks and go to the Arizona name. And it made complete sense to George and I and the partners because, well, first off, we're not sitting in the city of Phoenix. We're out here in Glendale. Secondly, it is important to us that we expand our footprint. And it may sound like a small thing, but I've talked to a lot of fans from Tucson and Flagstaff and Prescott Valley, and they've said, you know, "We'd like to see you embrace us and not just focus on the Valley of the Sun." So, it may sound small, but it is important to us. And in regards to any changes you'll see, a lot of people have asked about the uniforms. And next year, we're just going to be doing a patch change because, as all of you know that are wearing a Coyotes jersey, and God bless you all for doing that, the PHX will get changed to an AZ. And then, we are looking at uniform changes down the road, but I think a lot of people don't appreciate, we certainly didn't at first, the timeframe that it takes to go through the process. There's a very long lead time with merchandise partners. And we want to work with everybody. We want to get feedback. But as we've said all along, we have no plans on changing the logo. We think it's the best damn logo in the league and that will stay.
Follow-up to that, you and I have talked a lot about it. I've been fanning the flames for this, but throwback jerseys, can you have a night like that? Is that possible?
It is possible and it's official. It will happen next year. So, again, because of the lead time on merchandise partners and the uniforms for Don's players, there is a long lead time. And it took us about six months and we've been working on it. We received approval from the league last week. So, that will happen at least one game next year.
Tim Richardson asked, and I ask this question because I get it constantly, "Do you know anything about license plates? Coyote license plates?" Can you give us, are these, everyone wants to know.
Yes. It's something we're working on. I'm actually not being flippant here. The reality is, it is something that we are working on. We've submitted the application. The group actually did it before we took over. And I'm not going to make any disrespectful comments about government and how it operates, but because it was a previous group, that application process was killed. We had to restart the process. I don't know if Gail, our legal person and my assistant, is here because she's actually leading it. I don't have a timeframe, but it is something we're doing and God help me if we don't have it by next season.
There's three questions in the pile about mismanagement of government, so I'm not going to go there. All right, let's go down to George. And again, I look around here and I just think this is cool. You've been very active in this. We've seen you out here tailgating. We all know the story. So, first of all, your vision, what do you think of how it's developed and is there more things, are there more things on the horizon like this that you can pull out of your tricks?
I mean, this is hockey weather.
Yes. Right, exactly.
It doesn't get any better. No, I mean, it's been fantastic and, you know, we're constantly trying to think of new things, trying to really engage the team, the fans, trying to really engage the community. And, you know, we value everybody's comments and suggestions and, you know, through social media and through our email. We have an email suggestion and, no, we just want to keep doing more and more and more and we love it.
You are very active in the world of Twitter now, are you not?
Yes, I am.
Because I got hammered on the way home by a guy that was tweeting you and me and I just let it go. I had about 100 responses that I deleted, but I was wondering, you will engage though, right? I mean, when people reach out, you're there for them, aren't you?
No, absolutely. And, you know, and I like, I like the comments, I like the suggestions, you know, and we take everything in and we feed it back to our staff. And, you know, I might not get back to everyone, but, you know, we're reading them and we think it's a great mechanism to hear what you guys think about everything.
Don, let's get back to the ice here. Someone asked about the players that you've been most impressed with this year and maybe a call-out to the ones that you want to see get better.
Well, you know, if you look at our roster and the guy that's probably been most impressed with me is Antoine Vermette, to be honest with you. When we acquired Antoine, we thought he was a good two-way center, maybe even a winger. He has 20 goals now. He's really stopped up his offense. He kills penalties. He touches so many areas of our game and he's getting better. And that's the key. I think I really like the way Mikel Bodker's game has evolved. He's become an impactful player. And then, when you see a game the other night where we were so bad and he was bad, it really, it really just, it shows you the level he can be at when he competes all the time. So, obviously, Oliver Ekman-Larsson continues to be a star in front of our eyes. He's, he'll be one of the top two or three defenses in this league for a long, long time. We really, we're really fortunate to have him. So, that's a great, that's a good base. Certainly, if you look at our team, you have to start and look at their goaltending. Mike, he's been inconsistent, good start to the year. Has had some difficulties and I think this little break has been probably good. We hope. We'll find out in a couple hours, God willing. You know, you look at our, if you look at our, you know, we signed, Mike Ribero was a big free agent signing last summer. It was a key signing for us. The reviews are mixed right now with Mike. He's our leading scorer, so you say, "Well, he's come in." And I look at it, say, "You take him out of our lineup and then what do you have?" So, we have to make him better. He's proven to be a good player. He has a good relationship with Dave Tippett. We have to be more consistent in that area. So, all in all, there's been ins. Now, Keith Yandle, I thought for 25 games prior to the Olympic announcement, I thought he was our best player. I really did. I thought he took, taken a step. When that announcer came out and he missed the, being named to the U.S. team, I think it hurt him psychologically and then, and his performance has been a little mixed. So, all in all, we have still a lot of work to do to get better and position ourselves to get to a playoff spot.
I have a question. Thank you. I have a question from Todd at Fox Sports Arizona. I'm curious, the captain Shane Doan spoke his mind after the game against the Buffalo Sabres. I'm sure you heard it and we heard it on our post-game show and I'm sure you guys heard it on the way home on the radio. What's your take when you hear that as the GM, when the captain steps up and says, "We got to get better," in the way he said it?
Well, I think, you know, probably echoing the thoughts of the three of us up here. We, you know, you enter, you go into certain games where you look at the schedule and you say, "You have to have a win tonight." And, you know, a good first period and then, and letting that slip away, it's a, really, it's a real kick to all of us. And I think Shane, he could be sitting up here in the fourth chair, quite frankly. Because I look at Shane as a partner. He's not a player. He's in the locker room. He's a voice. And the good thing for us, we, you know, George and Anthony don't have to go storming down in the locker room when your captain comes out and really makes a statement for all of us that, you know, "We are who we are and we can't take anybody lightly." And I think that's, that was sort of the message. And hopefully, we'll respond tonight. We'll have a challenge.
As I pick up my questions, I think that's a great answer from the leadership. There's a number of questions in here and you and I have talked about it and I want to get a follow-up because all we did was talk via text. So, let's do it in front of everybody. Tell us what happened in Los Angeles at Dodger Stadium. You were there with a contingent of others. You talked to the commissioner Gary Bettman. I think just this, this whole, just the attitude and the atmosphere here today proves something to me. You can play hockey outside in January and February. So, what did he say? Everybody wants to know.
Yeah, so George and myself and four more of our partners went to Los Angeles last weekend and we had the opportunity to sit down with the commissioner and deputy commissioner in the morning and express what we've been very public about. And quite frankly, Bill Daley's already made public comments. I think it was back at the Board of Governors meeting. He indicated that Phoenix had put forth the request that, or the comment that we would like to host an outdoor game. My opinion, and I'd love George to chime in afterwards, my opinion after seeing that game in Los Angeles is first and foremost, it's a tremendous event and it's exactly what we need in this market to help us grow the brand, the brand of the NHL and hockey in general. I feel very confident. I think we gave a compelling story, but the reality is, we have to look to the league and their leadership. They need to get through. There's two more outdoor games in Vancouver and Chicago in March. They'll get through those and then they'll regroup and decide what they're going to do. But my opinion was, it's a great event. I'd love to see it here. And George, I don't know if you'd add anything to that.
No, I think we made a very good case. I mean, obviously, there's lots of cities that are vying for an outdoor game, so we have to wait our turn. But, you know, having the Super Bowl back here next year, back here next year, we think we made a pretty good case. And we know that we could put 55,000 people in the arena to come out and see the Coyotes play an outdoor game. But it's just not, it's just not the outdoor game. I mean, we want an All-Star game. We want a Frozen Four. We want a World Juniors. Like, we want to, we want to do a lot, right?
Don, what's your take from the hockey ops side at an outdoor game? What would you, what would you have to say?
Well, certainly, it's, if you read the comments of the players, everybody enjoys it. They love it. It's a great spectacle. Who gets a chance to play in front of 40,000 and 50,000 people? It's really more than the game. It's an event and there's not a player in this league that wouldn't enjoy participating.
George, I want to go back to you. We've seen plenty of the ownership group out on the road, which I think is a great sign. I think it's a great message to the players that are on that plane, that you guys are invested. You're out there living the life. You know what it's like now to drag your bag on the tarmac at 3:00 in the morning like the rest of us and I hope my boss is watching somewhere out there. I just don't think I need to go to the office every day. In any event, I digress. While you're there though, you're looking at other markets and other arenas. So, have you, have you seen anything where you say, "I got to do that. We got to do this. Let's incorporate that"?
Yeah, I mean, we visit the other arenas. We visit the other practice facilities. We're trying to see what the best practices are, you know, what's working for the players, what's working for the fans. And I really enjoyed that. I think we, you know, we have a lot of ideas what we want to do here and what we want to build on. And the other teams have been great and I've really enjoyed learning from them.
Don, it's interesting just to see the dynamic now on the plane. Four years really, in your great leadership, but without the owner, without the guy, and then there they are. Players notice that, don't they?
Oh, without a doubt. It's not only the plane, it's practices, just having a presence. I mean, and really, I, you know, the difference this year versus the last four, for me, it's night and day. You know, we, you know, even little things that people, you don't see. It's the dinners on the road or it's, you know, we've got a player in the minors, Rusty Klesa, who's a good player for us, where he hasn't played in the way we want him to play. The ability to put him down to the minors, we're still paying him a lot of money. We hope to get him back. And the ability to kind of dip into our budget and then have a little bit more available just gives us a better chance for success. So, for everybody on the hockey side, just, we know people are watching. We're accountable and we all have to do a better job.
Anthony, I'm going to turn this mic back to you. You got to tell us about pricing inside jobbing.com. I mean, I think a lot of people are curious to that. I know when I look at the bowl now, there's a different look to it on different nights. So, can you take us through that?
Yeah, I mean, we're working closely with the, with the sales staff. I've mentioned a number of times, one of the things we did out of the gate is we went out and we hired some tremendous leadership to work with George and myself and the rest of the ownership group. And I've seen them standing out here. We have Mike Humes, our EVP of corporate, and Jeff Miranda, our EVP of ticket sales. And because, you know, George and I humbly have been successful in our business lives, but we've, we've never run a professional sports team. So, having these guys come in with their expertise and their best practices is a big help. Now, when it comes directly to ticket price, the problem for us, but a benefit for everybody here, is we continue to have the lowest average ticket price in the entire NHL. That's, you know, so my message is, and I don't want anyone to throw anything at me, is prepare to see that start to go up, but we understand that, you know, the ticket price is very important for our fans. And I can say something right now and commit to it, that while ticket prices will continue to go up, next year, we will continue to be the lowest average ticket price in the NHL. Would I like to see us get to the midpoint? Of course. And are we going to strive to get to a ticket level that we think is fair and comparable to the rest of the league? Yes. But that's an important part. I mean, I think everybody wants to ensure that the business plan that we've put in place, that we can execute upon it. And we feel very confident to this point. It's only been six months, but we're executing. We're on target. If anything, we're above target. But we have to do those things. So, and you mentioned the, you know, certain sections of the lower bowl. Obviously, you're referring to certain parts of the end zone. These are things that we're working on and again, working with the leadership of Jeff and Mike to start filling it up. And I don't want to speak for anybody else, but for example, Tuesday night against Los Angeles, I thought it was a tremendous turnout, great vibe in the building. And tonight, obviously, is going to be something pretty special. It looks like we're going to break. I see a Pittsburgh fan clapping. No, 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 not because of Pittsburgh. You know, but we do expect that tonight is going to be, we will more than likely break the franchise record for a regular season revenue in regards to our gate. That's important. These are things we need to keep doing. So, thank you for that.
Don, can you underscore, I don't think I've ever talked to you about this, but just explain what it's like for a player. You played in the greatest arena of them all, Madison Square Garden. You know what it's like to walk out there, skate out there, I should say, in front of a crowd like that. It matters for a player on a Tuesday night against Columbus, doesn't it? When you go out there and take, you want to feel that. You want to have wings like eagles, right?
Well, that, you know, it's interesting because it's the biggest challenge out here in a, not only here, but other non-traditional hockey markets, so to speak, is that when you play those midweek games, we're always trying to find ways to motivate and put pressure on the players. And if you're up in Canada, for example, there'll be three or four pages of newspaper articles and five or six radio stations and TV stations at every practice and following the team. So, here, we try and create pressure internally, but also, it really helps externally when you know you're walking out and you see, we have the great loyal fam, loyal as anybody. We just need more of them. So, the game like Tuesday night against L.A., where it's a Tuesday night and we're thinking, "Okay, there's probably going to be 8,000 or 9,000 people in the building." When you walk in there and it's almost three-quarters, 90% full, it's a great motivator for the players. And I know everybody here is doing their part. We have to do our part. I always believe that winning sells. We have to win. We need to get to the playoffs. We have to show people that we have a good product, that we know what we're doing. And ultimately, that'll get more people in the building. So, we're excited. We're excited. A good night like tonight, there's no excuses. We'll hopefully bring our A-game.
George, I was doing a sit-down interview with Mike Smith for an upcoming show on Fox Sports Arizona about his trip to associate Team Canada. And I thought, "Hey, how cool would it look if we had his jersey from Team Canada hang behind him?" I was told, I'm not going to say who told me, but they said, "Well, we don't have it. George has it." Is this true?
That one and four other ones.
So, you're, so you are the guy that's carrying that overseas? You're that guy?
Somebody's got to take care of it.
Okay, okay. Well, tell us about what that trip, do you think, will be like for you? Now, you're going over there frankly, as the owner of a National Hockey League team. You've got four guys that are yours.
Yeah, it's my fifth Winter Olympics. It's the first time I actually have a pass. So, that's kind of neat.
You know a guy.
No, that's, that's, that's going to help. And it's, I'm a big Team Canada fan. I mean, I love, I have a Canadian Maple Leaf tattoo on my body.
That's a little too much information, right?
But this is, this is the first time I'll be going over with three other countries jerseys and...
Can you root for Team USA just a little? Just, I mean, this is your crowd here.
You know, we have, we've got, I have a Swedish jersey now with, a Czech jersey and a Finn jersey. And listen, there's nobody more upset than Yan's not making the team than myself. I thought this was a guy that really deserved to be on the team, especially with the international style of hockey and the bigger ice surface and the spark plug and that he could provide it for the USA team. And I think, you know, Brian Burke and the guys are really going to be regretting that decision for not having our player Keith Yandle over there on the ice. But even though, even though we don't have a player there, I'll be definitely, you know, cheering for the U.S. when they're not playing Canada.
There you go. Got it. See how it took them two minutes? You got to know your crowd, man. That's rule number one. This is another question from Todd from Fox Sports Arizona to Anthony LeBlanc. How did you get 12 members of the Miracle on Ice, including Mike Aruzioni, to come here before the Olympic break? Are you kidding me? How did you pull that?
Before I answer that, I just noticed an individual in the crowd I'd like to give a shout-out to. And my apologies to his colleagues if they're here. I can't see you because he's a really big guy. But I just want everyone to recognize and thank council member Gary Sherwood. If it wasn't for Gary and his, and his colleagues, we wouldn't be sitting here right now. So, thank you, Gary. And what do you see? He's not just standing, sitting behind a dais. He's here, he's here at every single game, as are a number of his colleagues. But I just highlight that, the relationship we have with the city of Glendale is tremendous. The Miracle on Ice team, and George took a few minutes to dance around that question. Hey, like, I'll pander, "USA, USA." And it is interesting you ask that question. When we closed, it was one of the things, Rich Narn and I sat down and we were talking about, you know, the negative of having this three- or four-week window where we don't have any games in our building. So, how could we send off in this really fantastic fashion? And like George, I'm a Canadian and I will admit, I'll be cheering for Team Canada. But the movie Miracle has always been one that I've always thought was one of the, it is the greatest sports movie of all time and certainly one of the greatest movies. So, I said, "Rich, any chance we can get a couple of these guys?" So, he reached out to, I think the gentleman's name is Bob Murray, is that correct, Rich? Who's an agent for the majority of these guys. And Rich comes into my office and says, "Well, yeah, we got 12 of them coming. Does that work?" Okay. So, yeah, we have Aruzioni and a number of the other players that actually had a successful career in the National Hockey League. Next Friday is going to be pretty special. So, I hope everyone here is going to be here for that.
Thank you for that. We have a one-hour pre-game show that night on Fox, on Fox Sports Arizona. I will tell you that we have so much, we have so many storylines to that, that we've had to extend it over the games leading up to it. Because you can connect the Miracle on Ice in 1980 in so many ways to the Phoenix Coyotes, from Dave King to Sean Burke to Don Maloney, who even has a recollection on where he was that night. So, we look forward to that. I'm not sure what this means, so I'm going to give you a hot potato here. Is that okay? You're willing, right? This is from Paul. Why are 95% of winners always in the lower bowl? You got to fix that. I don't know what he's talking about, but winners. How about shirts, like, stuff, right? That's what I think.
Fix that.
Okay. Yes, I'll fix that. Done.
All right. Perfect.
No, I mean, I have, I will admit, I've seen some pickup in social media in the last little while of people complaining about the lack of prizes and giveaways in the upper level. My apologies, I didn't know about it. Hell, I'll come up tonight and give something out, so.
George, do you have an answer to that? Do you concur?
No, I definitely concur.
Okay, great.
No.
There's the problem. Don, every other question is, I hate to do this before I go, but almost every other question is about the impending trade deadline. I'll just paraphrase. Where are you right now? What are you planning on? What are you looking for and what will, what will decide all that?
I'd like to hear those too.
Anthony? You know, it's an interesting time for us right now because, you know, it seems like every week it goes back. We say, okay, well, let's give it till the 1st of January to kind of get a better sense of where we're at. Now, let's give it to the 1st of February. Well, let's give it to the, to gauge, do we, how active we are in adding players to this roster versus the alternative. Is looking a little longer, longer down the road and saying, if we can't, you know, if we don't have the success, maybe we have to take a half a step back here. So we're, we continue to value, we're looking at this period right up to the Olympic break to really determine whether we think we can position ourselves, our legitimate playoff team. And if that's the case, then we go out a lot more active in the trade market. Or conversely, there's not many games after the break ends, there's only three games before the trade deadline. And, you know, then we have to kind of look at another. So the long story short, we're always looking long-term here to build a championship and a winner here. I refuse to do anything short-term with I would regard as assets. I mean, we could trade Max Dombe tomorrow to get ourselves a good player, probably helps us next week. We could, we could trade first-round picks to get a winger for Hansel and Verbatim. We're not doing that, we're not going to do that. That's part of our future. But we're very, we're working very hard to try and make this team better, give ourselves a better chance. I know the players, if we can, I think if we can add a forward or two, I still believe our defense is good. We just, you know, we're fooling around with the mix at times. Some guys are in the lineup, some people are out of the lineup. But we still feel like if we can get another forward or two, we'll give ourselves a chance to compete against anybody in the conference, whoever we end up playing in the playoffs. So it's, there's still time to decide which way we're going to go.
George, I want to follow that with you because you've, it seems like anytime there was a dip in this team's performance, somebody would ask you about it. That's your job, you're the owner, you guys are co-owners of this group. So George and Anthony, do you like this team? Do you like the way it's run? Go ahead and lay it out.
I mean, we do like the team. And I think that success that they had in October, November is an indication of the level that this team can play against. And we think this team can win. And our ownership group now is all about winning. It's first and foremost, we want to win. And we want to bring success through here every year to this. And that's, and we think this team can do it, but under Don and Dave's guidance, we'll listen to their advice and constantly looking for opportunities to try to be, you know, to try to build a better team and a winning team, so.
Yeah, I'd echo that. I mean, we came here for one purpose and that's to have a Stanley Cup parade down Glendale Avenue.
Not supposed to give the host chills. Oh, God. Anthony, this is Dan from Saskatoon. I won't read the whole question, but he was talking about 25 years ago, he attended a preseason game in Saskatoon between Dave Tippett and the Hartford Whalers and Tameo Solani and the Winnipeg Jets. He's been hooked for 25 years. Wants to know if there's any direct marketing of the Coyotes. He's saying directly to Saskatoon, but I'll broaden that. You obviously have a base of people that will, that will make their way down here, right?
It's a fine line for us. I mean, this is a unique market that I think that there's only a couple of other NHL markets, such as the Panthers and the Lightning, that have the advantage of having a vast degree of the fan base that is seasonal. And it's not just Canadian. We know that we have, you know, a number of Chicagoans here in the market and people from the Midwest. And we need to do a better job of reaching out to them, but not at the expense of our primary job, which is reaching out to our core fan base here in the Valley. So it is, you know, it is a fine line that we have to run. And I, you know, I received a lot of somewhat negative feedback when we announced our Canada Fest. I get it.